I'd like to call together to order the March 26, 2019 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland Two School Board of Trustees. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to move into Executive Session.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to convene into Executive Session for the purpose of discussing a contractual matter regarding the charter school, student appeals, and student admission request into the district's adult education program.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. It's been moved and properly seconded, and at this time, we'll call the question. By a vote of seven to zero, it is unanimously approved that we'll move into Executive Session.
I'm going to do this next one a little differently, but if you were here last year when we recognized this championship team, we're going to do it just like we did. But first, let's bring up the head coach for the Blazers varsity basketball team, Eric Stoman, Principal Dr. Brenda Mack-Foxworth, and Brian Rosefield Athletic Director if he's here. There. Now, with the basketball team, please make your way up front, and you are going to help me introduce yourselves. So come on up and line up right here. Ladies and gentlemen, these are our four A basketball state champions for the second year in a row. Can some of y'all go stand on that side? All right. I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves and tell us what position they are on the team, because you know I struggle with names, and we'd be here all night if I tried to do these as slowly and accurately as possible. So we're going to start down here. If you will tell me your name and what your position is.
All right, thank you. Corbin Landers, Assistant Coach.
Were you on the team last year?
I was.
Assistant Coach?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought so, because last year I said, "Coach, I thought you were a player."
I'm Adam Adama, Coach as well.
Fred Buxton, Assistant Coach.
Derek Crawford, Assistant Coach.
Xavier Major.
What position do you play, Xavier?
Four.
Javon Anderson, Guard.
Cardy Jam, Guard.
Seneca McKee, Stretch.
Xavier Parrott, Guard.
Javon Benson, Power Four.
Joseph McKenna, Guard.
Cameron James, Student Assistant.
Brendan Bynum, Point Guard.
And I'm here because a lot of these students are my former students when I was a school administrator, so I'm so excited.
Tyler Rice, Point Guard.
Patrick Jenkins, Four.
Malcolm Wilson, Center.
Jaren Green, Guard.
Sister Scott, Guard.
All right. So now, I'm going to tell them a little bit, in case you were at the game, which was an amazing game. I took my younger son, and he absolutely loved it. So again, they defeated Wilson for the second year in a row. They dominated the entire game, winning 65 to 52, and ending the season with a 25 to seven record. Now, a highlight for all of us at the game, all Blazers and Richland Two, was when we got down to that last minute, and Xavier Major helped to play and scored one of the final baskets in the game. The Ridgeview team also includes two All-Star players. Waylon Napper, his name, he was selected to play for the 71st Annual North-South Basketball All-Star Game earlier this month, and Malcolm Wilson, who played in the Carolina Classic All-Star Game between North and South Carolina last weekend. The South Carolina team came out on top with help from Malcolm with six blocks, seven rebounds, and three points. Congratulations on another premier basketball season. Now, gentlemen, we are just going to let you all walk straight outside, and we're going to take your group photo and give your certificates out there. But congratulations again. We're very proud of all of you. And that concludes Special Race. If you all just give us just a minute to let our students and honorees slip out, we
We'll just wait a second while the room clears. Everyone seems to be most interested in student accolades, which is a big deal, so we'll wait just a moment for the room to clear before we move on. At this time, we have arrived at Item Six on our agenda. If we could get a motion to approve our consent agenda, that'd be great.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the March 26, 2019 meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the -- well, we've got a pop-up already at this time. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. We have now arrived at Item Seven, Public Participation, specifically 7.1. Just as a reminder of a bit of housekeeping, all participants are limited to three minutes for their comments, and we strictly adhere to that. We have such a refrain from using any specific school or any student's name or teacher's name in your comments to just be respectful and courteous.
Madam Chair, when you finish.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, and be sure that when you approach the -- well, the button's already on, it's still on, that when you approach the button, that the red light is on so that we can all hear you and speak clearly. Thank you.
Yes. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a point of privilege at this time.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to just reiterate the guidelines for public participation tonight, just a few points. Members of the public may address the board on any subject within board authority, so the subjects that are addressed need to be something that the board can address. Secondly, speakers are requested to refrain from inappropriate language and from engaging in any form of personal abuses. As you have reiterated, Madam Chair, we do not use students' names, teachers' names, and et cetera, and we should not be doing that also with board members' names. This is not the time for that. I ask, I humbly ask that as the Chair of the Board, that you use the gavel to adhere to those policies so that we may continue with what we are here for, and that is the governance of children policy and moving the district forward. So I respectfully ask of that, that you follow those guidelines, Madam Chair.
Acknowledged. Dr. Holmes. At this time, we will have comments, public comments, from Mary Ann Wright.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Wright, and I am a resident of Richland Two, a retired teacher with 29 years in the classroom, and my son Nick is a graduate of Ridgeview High School. Tonight, I'm here also as a member of Moore Justice through my congregation, Adams Northeast AME Church, right here on Longtown Road. There are other members of Moore Justice here with me tonight also. We are an interfaith coalition of now more than 30 local congregations that have come together to do justice and to solve serious community-wide problems at the root of their cause. We have been working to improve school climate, teacher well-being, and increase suspensions in our community since the fall of 2017. This is especially important to me because Richland Two continues to see increasing numbers of out-of-school suspensions and nearly double the number of expulsions. We know that we can do better. This past Thursday, Moore Justice held a community forum on education, on building positive school climate. Dozens of community members, parents, and teachers were present. Collaborating partners for this event were South Carolina for Education, the Richland Two Black Parents Association, the South Carolina Fellowship of Bishops, the South Carolina Association of Positive Behavior Supports, USC College of Law, and others. The aim of the forum was to provide a venue for education and dialogue on poor school climate and its impact, as well as how PBIS is a proven evidence-based solution. Unfortunately, none of the members of the Richland Two School Board were in attendance. While there, dozens of us signed this letter, which I will read from in a minute, and I'd like to present this letter to you, Ms. Agostini, as the Secretary, when I'm done. So here goes. We know that our students and teachers are very important to you and that you want to ensure that Richland Two is one of the best school districts in the country. We want the same thing. While some of you have agreed to meet with the members of Moore Justice in the coming weeks ahead around school climate and discipline, we ask that all of you individually schedule time with Moore Justice.
Ms. Wright, I hate to cut you off. We have to adhere to the three minutes, but if you'd be kind enough to provide to us what you have in writing, I'm assuming that you're reading from what you have in writing.
I have the letter that I was going to read.
Provide it to us, I'll make sure that each of us gets a copy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we have signed up Gus Philpott.
Good evening. I'm Gus Philpott. Earlier this evening, when during the recognition, the cordless microphone was used by the organizer, the speaker. Everyone in this room could hear because the voice was well-amplified. So far this evening, very little of what has been said at the board level here has been audible in this room, and I think that that can be fixed and should be fixed so that everybody can hear. Now, tonight, I am not going to address on the issues that I have spoken about before in view of the direction. I'm also not going to speak about the harassment complaint that was filed against me last week at the Sheriff's Department or the false information contained in it, and I am going to thank you for the increased security here because it came in handy last week. As I was attempting to talk to a board member, a lieutenant from the Sheriff's Department was standing right with us, so he witnessed our calm conversation. And had there been any harassment in this room at that time, I'm sure he would have acted, and there was none. I don't know what else to say tonight. It's for the children. It's important for the board to set the example for the children, set the good example for the children. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. And actually, as a part of housekeeping, I am supposed to ask if anyone has problems hearing or needs some assistance, that please let us know. So if you're having trouble hearing, just raise your hand, and we will try to talk louder. Next, we have Ms. Rhonda Meisner.
Good evening. As normal, the order was again manipulated as convenient for the Board Chair and the Superintendent. I was scheduled as Number Eight, and again, brought to the second position, so I just wanted to bring that up again as a point of notice. At the conclusion of last board meeting, I requested to speak with the Superintendent and Board Chair regarding my concerns that Richland Two was not following the spirit of the law with regard to the identification and resources for gifted and talented students. As an example, there's no mention in the state statute 5929-170, or R. 43220, or the South Carolina Best Practices for Gifted Education Manual that I have forwarded to each of you that I'm aware of that uses grades as a means of state or national identification of gifted students. There is, however, a carve-out that allows local districts to identify students that may or may not qualify for state identification to be allowed to take certain honors or AP classes. This local identification in no way elevates the students to the state identified gifted and talented level. It is a separate entity together. I believe that the presentation that you received included both state identified and locally identified students, as I believe that there is a drop-off which reflects national averages at the middle school and high school level from Richland District School, Richland School District Two specifically. Because of the state identification, the students receive federal and state money under the Javits Program. However, locally identified students receive no such money. It was concerning for me to hear gifted and talented money is distributed equally. As the board may or may not be aware, the money allocated to the district is student-specific. Therefore, it would be unlikely that an equally distributed funds would be compliant with the state, the spirit of state law. I've been promised by the district that I would be provided with an accounting of the gifted and talented funds and the distribution thereof without having to file FOIA requests for those that are unfamiliar with the acronym. It's a Freedom of Information Act. To date, I still have not received this information. My request was over three months ago, and I understand the district is very busy looking at things to build. But I will close with a comment from Mendisa, and in her song, "We all bleed the same. We are beautiful when we come together."
Thank you, Ms. Meisner. At this time, we'll hear from, is it Carrie or Carey Humphrey? And correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just pronouncing your name, please.
Carrie.
Carrie, okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm a parent of both a Muller Road Magnet student and a Kelly Mill Magnet student here, and I'm here to talk about the communication I received regarding the gun incident at my son's school this last week. What my husband and I later found out, indeed, that communication was created by the district and delivered by the principal. While I realize we live in a litigious world, our messaging actions are protecting 1% in failing to provide the rest the confidence that leadership cares. To be frank, when I heard this message, I was left feeling the district's seriousness on the gun in the school was minimized. Since last Tuesday, we've had and received no follow-up to any evaluation of the incident or reiteration of the seriousness of any district policy changes, updates, so that this does not happen again. Last Tuesday, I received a voicemail from the administration about a safety concern. This was a serious issue. For my husband and me, there is nothing more serious than a gun in your child's school. We expect the district to refocus priorities, and it's all hands on deck. My husband connected a couple days later with one of the administrators to get our questions answered. The administrator shared that the situation was handled in 10 minutes. They discussed that the school is slated for dollars within the bond referendum to address the safety issue gap. This conversation was helpful and could have easily been pulled into a communication given to all parents. My role as a parent is to be part of the solution to this district and not just share my concerns. I've redone the message that was sent out. While it would have not answered everything for me, I would have felt there was some urgency, so here's the version that I've pulled together. Today, insert a time, a student reported a security issue involving another student to a teacher. The teacher reported the incident to an administrator who reported it to the SRO. The SRO immediately removed the student from the classroom and confiscated an unloaded gun from the student's possession. The SRO notified authorities the incident was handled in less than 10 minutes. No one was harmed, and the incident involved no other students or faculty. I want to assure parents, our district and this school has a zero-tolerance policy for weapons or guns on our premises, and the safety around this situation will be reevaluated. Faculty will be briefed on the incident today. We appreciate the student who spoke up and the faculty and SRO for taking quick action to resolve this situation. We are carrying on with our normal school day and all after-school activities. Thank you, parents, for your continued support in our school and its education. Our number-one goal is to provide a safe learning environment. You see, parents want to know that the issue was handled swiftly, kids are safe, leadership takes security as a number-one priority. Unfortunately, it's only my opinion, the message I received that day conveyed the lack of seriousness of the district's stance on this incident, and I don't feel assured that there's a safe school.
Ms. Humphrey, thank you for your comments, Ms. Humphrey. At this time, we'll hear from Ms. Kelly Dawson. I say Ms., but that's unisex. Could it be Ms. or Missed? Thank you, Ms. Dawson.
My daughter Abby will be speaking in a moment about why she supports Richland Two Charter High School continuing in its current format, but I wanted to give you a bit of background on Abby and why it's a good fit for our family. When Abby was three years old, she had brain surgery for an incredibly rare disease. We knew when she woke from surgery that all the muscles on the left of her body would be turned off, including the vision in the left half of both eyes. My husband and I made a decision at that time to raise her as we would our other four children and help her build her resilience. We saw her relearn to walk, tie her shoe with one hand, fight for acceptance on playgrounds, and long for a time she wouldn't have to explain to others what had happened to her arm or why she leant. Fast forward to the summer before ninth grade, when she starts her second season running cross-country, she made great friends and was excited about high school and the new season even though she knew she would come in last. She loved her home school, and she was doing well, until one day in November in PE, a basketball hit her in the head on her blind side. It was not the fault of the student who threw it or the teacher who let her play. It was just something that happens. Within hours, our world changed. She was diagnosed with a concussion, and while other students might heal within a couple weeks or a month or two, kids with a brain difference take longer. For Abby, it lasted a year and a half, a year and a half of migraines and days of sleeping. Her home school was great. They worked well with us and got her quickly involved with homebound instruction. While we tried to keep up with her schoolwork, she tried to heal. About four months after the concussion, we tried to get her to go to class for half a day, and again, home school was wonderful. We thought she was improving. We had no idea we were stressing her out. That made she begin to have confusion migraines. Her pain would spike, and she would have temporary amnesia or extreme confusion. Over the summer, that seemed to finally heal, and we finished the freshman year, and we thought we were good to go, except as August approached, she was afraid of returning to her home school, not because of teachers or any sort of issue, but the overwhelming sound and motion around her. Sure enough, a couple weeks into the new school, her health issues escalated. As a family, we made a decision to pull her out of school and figure something else out. That something else ended up being the Charter High School. They have worked endlessly with Abby to complete credits and move her forward at her speed. She has managed to catch up to the credits lost her sophomore year because of health and is back on schedule to graduate. Her home school has allowed her to run, continue to run cross-country, and she will again compete this fall. Charter High School teachers have been helping her with future planning, resume writing, job searching, and college tours. They know Abby the person and have never treated her as a person with a disability. They have helped our daughter to gain the confidence in school she used to have and have helped her get back on track with her future. As a former teacher in this district, I've noticed several former students in this school as well. These students have also found a place that knows them and works with them on charting their own unique path. Not all kids work well in a traditional environment, and Dr. Mills and his faculty and staff are working hard to create a caring faculty where every faculty knows the stories of the students and works to move them forward.
Ms. Dawson, I have to let you get all of your statement out.
One sentence that we're good.
We have to adhere to the three-minute policy, but if anyone ever does not finish the statements you have, feel free to share those with us in writing, and we'll make sure that every board member gets a copy. Next, we'll hear from Abigail Dawson.
The Richland Two Charter High School is like a second home to me. The small environment helps me focus and feel more confident. There are moments where I feel where I am ahead in my work and feel stress-free, a feeling I never got at my home school. I was able to get caught up with my schoolwork after my concussion and I transferred here last year. Looking at my report card and seeing that I'm ahead in some of my classes makes me think that I'm, think about how I've come so far, and I only have one more year before I graduate. I work hard, I work best in an environment like this, and would hate for all of the focus and routine to go away if I had to go, if I had to go back to my home school. I no longer have to worry about getting from one floor to another in five minutes or become sensitive to loud noises from people around me. I felt lost at my home school, felt judged by the people who stared. I worked until four every day, going home to relax instead of having to, having homework for seven classes. I'm glad I found the Charter High School because it worked for me and it worked for others.
Ms. Dawson, I'm telling you what adults already know. We don't respond to people who come to the podium, but there'll be a resolution of that matter later in tonight's meeting. But I just want to take a point of personal privilege to say thank you. When kids come and students come and speak to us, this is, we're here for them. We're not here for us. We've all, you know, attained an education. We are here for the babies. I call them babies, and they're not babies, but that's what it was. We are here for them, to advocate for them, so whenever we have the opportunity, and I call it, I consider it a pleasure, to hear from a student, we heard from one, I think, a few board meetings ago with their own comments, it means a lot to me, so I'm just glad to see a student here sharing your viewpoint. We appreciate that. Next, we'll hear from Ms. Audrey Crawford.
Abby, you rock. I'm going to say that first of all. Good evening, and thank you for taking time to hear my concerns. My name's Audrey Crawford, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Richland Two Charter High School. Both of my children attended the charter school, and I served for several years on their school board. Short story, I'm a big fan. Each of my children attended for different reasons. My son was a challenge when it came to school, and even though he's very intelligent, I became concerned over whether or not he had actually finished high school, you know, stay in there and get his high school diploma. We found the charter school to be the perfect fit for him, an environment that allowed him to understand the need for his diploma and any career choice he was looking into, and one that encouraged him to finish. He's now serving in the United States Coast Guard in Hawaii. Bless his heart. My daughter didn't need quite as much intervention towards actually getting her diploma, but was not happy in the public school environment. At the Richland Two Charter High School, she was able to research and try out many career interests and is now working towards becoming a zookeeper. As a school board member, I had opportunity to sit on many of the students' exit interviews. As someone who has always been involved in youth work, I was an educator, a scout leader, church youth worker, and currently own my own Taekwondo school. I was impressed by how each student not only had their long-term career choice, but a solid plan on how to get there, whether that was a college degree, a certification program, the military, or straight into the workforce. They knew what they were doing. They knew how to get there. I find this to be a unique factor with the charter school students in comparison to the average local high school student. Finally, I'd like to tell you about the type of students who I recommend to the charter school. I currently have three students at my Taekwondo school who I've suggested look into the charter school. All three are A. All three are not only black belts at my school, but they're also part of my leadership program. I hope my words tonight have given you a glimpse into the type of students who are benefiting with the Richland Two Charter High School, and I hope that when you vote tonight, you'll consider how many future students can be positively impacted by the continued existence of the Richland Two Charter High School. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Next, we'll hear from Kimberly Too Good.
Good evening. I am Mrs. Too Good and I would like to thank the board for their time and countless hours of service. I am a resident and a parent of two children in our district. I would like to bring to the attention of this board the cellular tower land proposal. I am seeking a greater understanding on this matter. I am concerned about the lack of transparency surrounding this project. I am also dissatisfied with the lack of information being presented to Richland Two families on behalf of Milestone Communications. On the Milestone Communications website, they discuss their notification process, and I quote, "We work with local school leadership to discuss and coordinate notification which may include outreach tools such as backpack announcements, school website postings, phone notification, e-alerts, Facebook posts, tweets, or direct mailings to the homes of all registered students in the communities. To date, I can find no proof that these actions have occurred. Residents have only reported seeing signage once along Kelly Mill Road. I would like to know why the district has pursued a relationship with Milestone Communications. I would also like to know why there are many towers proposed within such a close proximity to one another. After speaking with the district director of planning, I would also encourage the district to share the independently verified data that they have used to allow growth in this arena. I would also like to remind everyone that there are no long-term studies that have been done regarding the adverse effects of radio frequency exposure. Thank you for listening and considering this matter appropriately."
Thank you, Ms. Too Good. Are those all the sign-up sheets we have, Mrs. Sherman? That being the case, we will conclude the portion of public participation and move on to item eight, specifically item 8.1. And I've been asked to remind that there are hearing assisted devices available for anyone who's having trouble hearing and needs assistance. Just let us know and we'd be happy to help you with that if you can't hear us. Thanks so much. Item eight, legislative update. Mr. Shad.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. You all received last week the legislative update, the most recent legislative update, but for the benefit of the public, I will just highlight a few points. The House approved a $9 billion state spending plan for school year 19 to 20, and it breaks down, I'll just highlight a few of the things. $159 million will be paid for a 4% teacher pay increase, which will raise the starting salary from $32,000 to $35,000. Just by reference, my understanding is that Richland District Two already starts at $35,000. There are no additional funds provided for the base student costs to cover the state-mandated step increase. $14.8 million of that budget would be for public charter schools. $4.2 million in EIA funds or Education Improvement Act funding will be for 1% employer retirement contribution. $10 million EIA funding for SROs. $19.3 million for school buses. The House adopted several provisos. I won't go into all of them, but one specifically that I wanted to talk about was, or bring to your attention, is it eliminates the language requiring a study for the transfer of school district career and technology centers to technical colleges, but it keeps the requirement that the two boards work together. It allows for retirees to return back to work and be exempt from the $10,000 earnings cap after a break of employment for 12 months. And another proviso directs schools to include a cultural sensitivity component in African-American history instruction in grades three through 12 to teach how students should interact with and be respectful of the beliefs and practices of people of a different race or creed. We talked in the past about the education reform bill. It did pass. The House bill passed with 14 amendments, which includes a name change. They changed the name. Now it's South Carolina Education Career Opportunity and Access for All Act. The Senate bill, which is S419, it's currently in the committee, the subcommittee, and they're receiving amendments as of right now regarding Reed to Succeed. I will say that some of the board members attended an education forum on yesterday hosted by Senator McLeod. It was really a listening opportunity to hear from the public and other leaders. And Senator McLeod, again, she hosted it. Senator Fanning was in attendance and Representative Thigpen was there as well. The consolidation bill, there's talk of consolidating school districts with less than 1,500 students by 2022, and this would be the Tier Four counties, which is Member County, Barnwell County, and Clarendon County. And that has been okayed by the Centers, I understand. TUDAC, which is the South Carolina School Boards Association's advocacy effort or initiative where we spend two days with the General Assembly. Richland Two has committed to attending on April 10th as part of our advocacy initiative. We would take part in that, and that's where we go and lobby members of the General Assembly regarding budget, the reform bill, and the school's start date. That is the legislative update for today.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Are there any questions or comments from board members with regard to the update? If not, I'd like to thank you for your comprehensive report. And there's information that we have. Can we share that online? Or just talk about that later? It's good stuff. It's good stuff. Yeah. We'll talk about that a little bit before I commit to it. But yeah, with regard to the education, I'm sure that we've all made the gamut of different education forums, and there's not just one. But I wanted to take a moment to thank our Richland Two community because they came out in full force last night. There was a large representation from Dr. Haas and other members of SC for Ed, Nicole Walker, I think, and Lisa Ellis were on the panel, but there were a lot of SC, and I'm saying SC for Ed, but it's educators. There were business community members there, parents who were there, parents of students who have already graduated, parents who have kids who are still in school. And I just want to thank, there were people there from Richland Two, from Richland One, and from the Fairfield community, which is ironic because that was the representation. The superintendent from District One was also there. But I just want to thank our community for sharing your thoughts, and I think it was labeled a listening tour. But with regard to the education reform bill or any questions you have, please share your questions. Everybody can't go to the State House and be there and go to a committee meeting, but if you can send an email or send a text or make a phone call to make your concerns heard, we'll make sure that those get to who they need to be. If you don't know who to contact, contact us, and we'll make sure those concerns get there. There's a large population, particularly in the Senate, of people who are concerned and are actively listening and have made that known. So thank you all for being there as a community to support that effort and to have your concerns known as concerns to your children. You have other questions?
Madam Chair, and I apologize, you may have said it in your comments, but this forum took place at Dent Middle School.
It did, it was on Richland Two, yeah, it was at Dent Middle School. Thank you, Mr. Shad. If there are other questions or comments, we will move on to item 9.1, a report with regard to the charter school renewal. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Perry Mills, principal of the charter school, will come forth this evening to share a report regarding the charter school. Dr. Mills.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of Richland Two, board of trustees, executive staff of Richland Two, parents and students. I'm here tonight with four slides this time, very short, but my goal tonight is to share with you some of the changes that we've made already this year, which is my second year serving as principal of the school. As you can see from the slides and I shared earlier, we do have a change in our schedule where we're trying to increase the number of hours that students are in the building, which in my opinion has helped us significantly. I shared in January, and I didn't have a slide or the numbers, but our comparison from first semester last year and first semester this year with the change of schedule warranted us a 105% increase in the number of students earning credits and 178% increase of how many credits were earned. And that was simply done by just increasing and changing the amount of time that they had to be in school. Understanding it is a virtual school, but we are working toward being a more blended model so students will have the support from the teachers in the building on a regular basis. And again, I walked right into my second bullet already. Increased number of courses taken at one time. At one point, students came in, we were giving two classes at a time, and once they finished those two classes based on their attendance, we would give them additional courses. This year, we doubled that. We start them off with at least four classes. Our goal is four classes first semester, four classes second semester, eight credits in that school year with the hopes of graduating possibly within three years. Some of those students who come to us behind, if they stayed on track with our course for them, they could very well play catch-up and/or graduate early. I would like to say part of our reason for being considered CSI school right now is our graduation rate, so that's why a lot of the things that we're changing is going to support that, on track to support that. Assigned 45-minute classes during the time where they're here, their students are sitting in four 45-minute classes where they can get direct support from their math teacher and their English teacher. We have two other staff members that may not be certified teachers, but they give tremendous help to our students in making sure they're on pace and doing what they need to do. We place every student on an AIP simply because we felt like, why wait for them to fall behind in academics or attendance? Let's put a contract with them, myself, the parent, the student in advance, so we can have a goal going in forward. And I plan to do the same thing in August when school starts.
Can you tell us what AIP is?
It's our Attendance individually plan. And we also kind of sort of double it as our academics, so we're looking at their attendance and the academics. So we kind of use the A duly, but for attendance primarily and then academics. Continue, we have a 24-hour, 24-hour, seven-day-a-week free tutoring for our students. I was able to purchase that through a grant, so our students can be sitting home any time of night, Saturday or Sunday, and if they need help in classes, Mom, Dad doesn't have to pay a dime. Our grant from the State Department allowed us to do that, and so the students are still benefiting from that and it will go into next year. I still have hours of our support for the students for that as well. And we've recently also started to mandate Friday attendance. Our students currently come to school Monday through Thursday for the half-days, but we're also identifying those students who are not academically making what they need to make. Friday is not a choice anymore. It's mandated because we need to bring them in to make sure they get the support and help that they need. Last Friday was a pretty nice crowd. We hadn't had one in a while, so they came in as directed and they did well. So we're looking forward to Fridays being that opportunity for them to play catch-up and do what they need to do. Next slide. I mentioned CSI, and I always jokily acknowledge that is not crime scene investigation. We have been identified as a comprehensive support and improvement school based on our graduation rate not meeting the state standards. And because of that, we do have a transformation code. Someone from the State Department of Education, she actually has modeled my schedule. I'm a 245-day employee, so she will be with me even over the summer, so she doesn't get to take off. She is my shadow. I identify her as support. A lot of times when the State Department comes into your school, we look at it almost as a threat. She is not a threat to me. She is a form of support for us, our staff and our students, and ideas, suggestions, and goals to help me get to where we need to be. In addition to that, the second bullet, they gave us a $75,000 grant for us to do certain things. One of the things I would like to do is, since we don't have a science teacher, hire a part-time science teacher for that position. And speaking with Dr. Davis several months ago, he suggested, and I think Richland Northeast High School and Westwood High School use TE21 was a benchmark assessment, so we have purchased a benchmark assessment to use it three times a year to also identify where our students are in their weaknesses or shortcomings so we can more adapt our instruction to that. And monthly professional development for our admin team, and we bring that back. We meet twice a month with my coach, myself, and our assistant principal. Myself and my assistant principal, we have monthly coaching with the State Department of Education in regards to this platform and how we're moving forward, looking at structure, sustainability, and consistency as our key words of where we're trying to make sure our school is so we can move forward. Next slide. I'm not going to read these. A lot of our students, one of which, Abigail, I didn't know who was going to come. I have Abigail's statement up here. But some of our students who wanted to come and could not make it or did not feel comfortable standing, I just wanted you all to see a couple of slides. This slide and my next slide were some of the things that speaks their heart about the school and how it has supported them. And just like any other school, no school fits every child, but our school do fit a lot of students. And I know later on this evening you will be voting on whether or not our school will be renewed, or if at all, and how will it be renewed. And these are some of the things I just wanted to share with you all from my standpoint as the building level supervisor. And I'm kind of glad and surprised, I think I have everyone in my staff here tonight. All my staff is here and to include three of my board members, so I thank you all for being here with me as well. That concludes my report, barring any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. Are there any questions or comments? I know we've talked a good bit about it in executive session, but are there any questions or comments from board members? Dr. Elkins.
Just want to talk about the mandated Friday attendance. Is that flexible with students who may work on Fridays? Because I know initially the charter school had a requirement of four days a week, so if they come on that Friday, they can take Monday or Tuesday off, or do they still have to have that mandate? Because I'm a little concerned about that if we have students who are attending for the flexibility and now we're changing to mandate Friday as one of those days. So if you can talk more on that.
We mandate the Fridays because of certain concerns with academics and/or attendance. However, I'm still extremely flexible. I do understand that there are concerns and issues. A lot of our students do have jobs, they have to support their homes. So we also have a tracking device within our platform called PEAK, which the district uses. I can still acknowledge and see when a student signs on, the second they sign on, the second they sign off, so we can work with them as far as saying, well, I see where you went on Saturday or Sunday. So we can still show time, so I'm not that difficult in still being flexible with that because I do understand that as a concern because the charter school was built off of the flexibility for our students to be able to work and do certain things, and I think we still support that for the most part.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins. Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, I know we've had some pretty extensive conversations before we got to the board meeting, so thank you all for airing your concerns at that time. And hearing none, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Moving on to item 10, voting on executive session items. If we could at this time, refer to item 10.1, the approval of the charter school renewal. Dr. Davis.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we're at item 10.1, which is approval of the charter school renewal, application for sponsorship by Richland School District Two, and there needs to be a motion made and a vote taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Is there a motion or recommendation on item 10.1 at this time?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Dr. Elkins.
I would like to approve and sponsor the Richland Two, I would like to make a motion that we approve and sponsor the Richland Two Charter High School application pending an agreed-upon contract without the AEC designation for a provisional period of three years.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none at this time, we will call a question. Dr. Elkins, can you verify that the motion is as you've read before we cast our votes? Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. And we've got our pop-up to cast our votes. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries.
Madam Chair, I would just like to make a comment to the charter school faculty and staff. Want to say thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you for everything that you've done within the last year or two. The charter school has been one of my concerns since 2012, and in the short And in the short period of time that you guys have been there, you have done a complete turnaround. So thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you for everything that you've done, and I'm looking forward to working with you guys in the years to come. Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on to item 10.2, student appeals. If we could get a motion at this time.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
With regard to the appeals, we will pull out students 1, 5, 7, 8, and on the addendum, student number 3. But I make the following motion. Blythewood Academy for student number 2. Blythewood Academy with Lradex services for the remainder of the school year. Student number 3, Blythewood Academy for the remainder of the school year. Student number 4, Blythewood Academy for the remainder of the school year. Student number 6, deny the appeal. That is my first motion.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second with regard to that portion of his motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. It's been motioned and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question at this time. If you'll take a moment, Mr. Shad, to review the motion to be sure that it's accurate as you have set it forth on screen.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. At this point, at this time, we'll cast our votes. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. Mr. Shad, if you'd like to continue.
Madam Chair, I move that for student 1, that we deny the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question at this time. By a vote of five to two, the motion carries. Mr. Shad.
Madam Chair, with regard to student number 5, I move for Blythewood Academy for the remainder of the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second to your motion?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will call for the question at this time. By a vote of five to two, the motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
With regard to student number 7, I move for Blythewood Academy with Lradex services for the remainder of the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? By a vote of five to two, the motion carries. Mr. Shad.
Madam Chair, with regard to student number 8, I move for Blythewood Academy for the remainder of the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? By a vote of five to two, the motion carries. And if we could get a motion with regard to the student addendums at this time?
Madam Chair, with regard to the addendum, student number 1, deny the appeal. Student number 2, Blythewood Academy with Lradex services for the remainder of the
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? Does that look accurate, Mr. Shad, according to what you've set forth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
Under the addendum, with regard to student number 3, I move that we deny the appeal and uphold the recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question at this time. By a vote of six to one, the motion carries. Is there a recommendation with regard to admission requests into adult education?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
I move that we approve the student admission request for students 1 and 2 into the district's adult education program.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question at this time. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. Moving on to, thank you, Mr. Shad. Moving on to old business action requested, item 11, Dr. Davis.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we are at the point of old business action requested, and so we're bringing before you the following policies for your approval. The approval of policy revisions to ADF wellness, a policy revision to EFE competitive food sales, and a policy revision approval of EEAG student transportation in private vehicles. We're looking for a motion for the approval of the following three policies. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini. I would, I move to approve policy revision ADF wellness and policy revision EFE competitive food sales.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion with regard to the same? Hearing none, we'll call the question on those two items at this time. Mr. Shad. I know you both spoke. I got the one I heard first. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. Is there a recommendation with regard to item 11.3, the approval of policy revisions EEAG? I think I can barely see. Student transportation in private vehicles.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to postpone the vote on policy EEAG until June of 2019 so that the board may have further discussion.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion at this time?
I, while I agree with Mrs. Agostini, I would like to amend that to stipulate a time limit as to when we should.
She's recommended June for that time limit.
Okay.
Is there a reason that you wanted to wait until June as opposed to the next board meeting or the next couple of board meetings?
Just at the recommendation to give us some time to look at a couple of different policies, and perhaps we can reach out to teachers to see if they have suggestions. I know that there was also the suggestion that teachers might want to weigh in on this policy, and maybe we can approach the faculty advisory committee to get some suggestions as well. That's the reason why I put 2019. We just need to have it in place for a discussion that I had with Dr. Davis by the next school year. So that's why I selected that timeframe.
First or second board meeting in June?
The first board meeting would be fine.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Dr. Holmes.
She answered my question.
Okay. Questions or comments? If not, there is a motion.
While I probably will vote in favor of it, Dr. Davis, where do we stand now if this policy is not voted upon between now and June?
We'll continue to follow the current practices that we have, which does allow for teachers or adults to transport students in private vehicles.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Mr. Shad, is there any further discussion? By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. Moving on to item 12 in our agenda, new business action requested. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, we have our chief for teaching and learning, Ms. Nancy Gregory, who will come before you. We're seeking the approval of the 2019-2020 request for local board-approved courses as presented. You received that information in your board packet. Ms. Gregory stands ready to answer any questions, should there be any. Ms. Gregory.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Davis. A local board-approved course, it's an elective course that is not listed in the State Department of Education's Activity Code Book. The state allows local school districts the flexibility to create local board-approved courses as electives only. These courses allow us to best meet school and student needs in our district. As a formality, local school boards are required to approve these courses. You have a list of 11 new LBA courses for your approval for 2019-20. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Oh, Mr. Manning.
I move to approve the 2019-20 request for local board-approved courses as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion at this time? Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Yes, I was looking at the course that says Passion Project. Can you pull it up on the screen? Or if not, can you read so the public would know what course, the course description for Passion Project?
Yep.
And then also, my question is, what is the criteria to take that class? And what is the certification that a teacher would need, or if any?
Passion Project class is where students choose topics they're interested in and learn more about them for completing a project. The comprehensive project may be a model, demonstration, experiment, TED Talk, multimedia showcase, et cetera. Students present their projects to an authentic audience to teach about what they have learned. Students complete two full projects per semester, and it is an elective class.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, with Passion Project, I think that's awesome, but I'm just not clear on the grading scale because you're going to have an audience to critique the grading. Would it be the same audience for each project, or different people will come in?
Usually, in this case, they are experts in the field of whatever the project is own, and they will not do the grading. They will be specifically giving the students feedback as to how to improve their projects. And it's from practitioners in the field. For example, if the Passion Project is in engineering, some of the members that would come in for the authentic audience would be engineers. Does that answer your question?
A little. What is the certification that a teacher would need?
I'll have to get back to you because I don't, we don't have certifications for
Mr. Manning, I would love for you to table Passion Projects until they can come back with more details and a criteria and teacher certification in that before we actually approve something that we don't have all the details on.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Dr. Manago may be able to answer because she worked on these. Dr. Manago is our high school director.
And this is a point of clarification. We have a motion on the floor that we have to dispense with before we can entertain another I'm sorry, that was for Dr. Elkins Johnson. Go right ahead, she can come forth. I'm sorry.
Good evening. This is an elective course. It's a middle school course, or it's a non-credit-bearing course for middle school students. It was designed for Summit Parkway, one of their magnet programs. And because it's an elective course, it does not require a specific teacher certification area. It is run by the magnet director as a part of the program. So it's just like many of our elective credits, even at the high school level, do not have a specific certification tied to it. So for example, a research, and there are several research projects listed for local board-approved through R2I2. Those courses are open. Any teacher can teach a research course. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Elkins Johnson, does that complete your question? Additional questions or concerns from board members? If not, there is a motion on the floor. If there's no discussion, we need to call the question at this time. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13, new business, no action requested.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, we're at the new business or action requested. The first order of business is 13.1, which would be the proposal, policy revisions to GBEB, staff conduct. 13.2, policy revisions to GCK, professional staff assignments and transfers. Proposals for policy revision, GCOA, evaluation of staff, instructional staff, and the proposal for policy revisions, GDJ, support staff assignments and transfers. And our chief for human resources, Sean Williams, stands ready to answer any questions, should there be any. should there be any.
Ms. Williams, are there any questions or concerns about any of the policies set forth this evening? Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, I wanted to go to policy GBEB.
Yes, ma'am.
And my question is, it starts on page two where it says, "Employees of the District Why on Duty and in the Presence of Students Will Not Use Profanity," will not use tobacco, and it continues. And I guess my question is, what about our coaches? Does this apply to them about not using profanity? And is this something that we're going to get out to the coaches of this policy so they'll know not to violate that?
Yes, ma'am. And this is in the coach's handbook as well.
Okay. Okay, let's look at page three, the same policy. And I wish, is there any way we can pull that up where the public, we can? Okay. Let me pull it back up. On page three, it talks about refusing to follow a supervisor's instruction and directives. And I want to know if we could add something, if the directives and the instructions are moral and legal, or however you guys would like to word that. If we can insert that.
Point of clarification, Dr. Elkins Johnson, what's the determination of moral in a policy such as that? So one person's morality level and another person's mor- morality may be different. I may ask that we consider if those instructions are legal. I know that seems tedious, but people have different moral standards.
You're absolutely correct. Let's just go back to legal. And that's why I said moral and legal.
In accord with board policy.
Yes, yes.
Dr. Davis?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Holmes?
Yes. On that same one, I had the same point there, but my aspect was, I looked at that and said, what about if we had, should say, instruction or direct, I can't read my writing, instruction or direct impact on their duties as a teacher or employee, as opposed to maybe moral, not following the instructions? If it's, do you understand what I'm saying there? Because it's too subjective, the way that it stands, that you have to just follow instructions without it being clarified. So it should be maybe clarified to say, in, with the, it has to pertain to not following instructions due to anything that impacts their duties, as opposed to just not following instructions. I could, you could tell me to go to the hallway down the hall, and I decide not to go, then I didn't follow your instructions. It's too subjective. It needs to be clarified a little more and maybe more specifics about their job duties because that leaves it too subjective.
What is your recommendation, Dr. Holmes? What is your recommendation as to how?
I'm trying to see because I don't have my glasses on. I wrote it down.
It's okay. I can relate.
Okay, I'm gonna pull it back so I can see. I said, um, should say, instruction or direct impact on their duties as a teacher or employee.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yeah, I wasn't quite finished with all the points. Also, on page four, the bullet that states disclosing personal, sexual, family, employment, other private concern to students or unauthorized individuals. What do you mean by employment on that bullet? If you could explain that?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. It's on page four.
Which bullet is it, Dr. Johnson?
It's the, one, two, three, fourth bullet. If you can explain that bullet.
Okay, it says disclosing personal, sexual, family, employment, other private concerns to students or other unauthorized individuals, which would be anyone that's in the building. Could be your substitutes. It could be sharing information that does not need to be shared.
About employment?
Employment because they may have outside employment as well.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So should we indicate outside employment? Because that was a little confusing there.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Agostini.
I read employment as just being an employer and, for example, sharing salary information or any specific details as related to the job.
Well, that's not what she just stated. She said outside employment.
All right.
So which one is it?
I think she was giving example, were you not? Of what it could be?
It was an example, yes, ma'am.
So it could be any type of employment?
Any type of employment.
Richland 2 or outside?
Or outside, yes, ma'am.
Okay, if you can come down to bullet number, that was four, bullet six. It says, "Non-counseling or non-social work staff encouraging students to confide their personal, family, or personal relationship problems. Staff should refer students to school counseling office if there is a need for counseling." And my concern with that is, if there is a student who has a relationship with one of their teachers or their coaches, and they confide the information and have them to go with them to share, because not all students have a relationship with school counselors. So this is stating that they can only have these conversations with a school counselor. And I know we have so many teachers that have relationships with students that they wouldn't confide anyone else but that teacher that they have built that trusting relationship with.
Dr. Elkins Johnson, I agree with that, and I think the spirit of this policy is encouraging that should counseling services be needed, that the student should seek counseling from a trained professional who is a school counselor. So I do acknowledge that they may share information with that teacher and confide in that teacher, but we want to refrain, we want teachers or classified staff who are not trained counselors to avoid trying to counsel the student, which could cause further damage to the student if that, if there is indeed a need for counseling. We do have certified staff in the building who are trained professionals to provide counseling services. So again, if there are a need for, if there is a need for counseling, to refer that student to the appropriate person.
Right, so is there any way that we can go back and reword this? Because I don't want a student who is, a teacher who's consoling a student who need that teacher immediately just to listen to them or for them to share information, and because of this policy, that teacher or that custodian staff or that cafeteria worker cannot do it, and they'll be in violation of this policy.
I think they would not be in violation of the policy with the clause if there is a need for counseling. As the statement reads now, "Non-counseling or non-social work staff encouraging students to confide their personal, family, and personal relationship problems. Staff should refer students to school counseling office if there is a need for counseling." So if there's no need for counseling, if they didn't determine that, then they don't have to do it. But once they decide that they need to have therapeutic sessions or want to counsel a student, we want to encourage them or have a provision in our policies that states that they need to refer that student to a social worker, a mental health professional, and a school counselor, considering the impact that we've already talked about, social emotional well-being of our students.
Okay, so having a conversation where the student feels comfortable with the teacher and the teacher giving the student advice, that is not counseling. Is that my understanding that you just said?
By the definition of counseling, advice is absolutely not counseling, yes, ma'am. If you are a school, if you are a counselor, one of the first thing you learn is that you should not give advice about what a person should or should not do. So absolutely, we just want to encourage if a student is having, for example, suicide ideation issues, and they're talking about harming themselves, we need to immediately get that student to a trained professional to deescalate that situation, not an untrained teacher who may say, oh, you know, may say something that's inappropriate and not really address that appropriately. We want to get them to the right, to the right person. And they're more than welcome to escort that student down and share that information with the school counselor. But once the counseling, counseling needs start, we need to have the counselors provide that.
Thank you for that, but I just want to make sure that our teachers are not blindsided by this policy or administrators misinterpret this policy and call it counseling when teachers are actually being supportive.
Additional questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Shad?
And I apologize if someone had already mentioned this prior to this meeting, but with GBEB, page two, which is the paragraph talking about those bullet points, Ms. Williams?
Mr. Shad, can you repeat that, please?
Page two, the paragraph right before all of the bullets that we were just discussing.
Okay, thank you.
Are you there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It says, "The following list." I think that should be exhaustive.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Additional questions or concerns?
Just as it relates to the GBE policy, based on the recommendations from school board members, Dr. Elkins Johnson specifically, we'll make sure that as we make staff aware of this policy, that we clarify the counseling, the counseling portion of it so that they are aware that we are not asking teachers not to have a relationship, a trusting relationship with our students, but we will clarify that if it is determined that that student should or need counseling, that we get them to the appropriate mental health or school counselor or social worker. So we'll clarify that in our training. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Are we going through them one at a time, or we have board members just asking about whichever policy concerns?
These are just proposals, no action taken. Typically, this is where we would have received the revisions or requests ahead of time and addresses, but we are taking these revisions and will modify according to the board's wishes and present them to you at the second reading with those amendments or changes to the policies.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Barring any questions or comments that board members have made ahead of time, if there are no other questions or comments with regard to policy 13.1 through 13.4?
No, I have some more questions. If we can take our time and go through each policy, and if we don't have any comments, we can move forward, but I think it's a disservice when we rush through policies. These policies affect our teachers and our students and our constituents. So let's take our time and go through each policy, and if we don't have any comments, we don't have to make any. But I think we don't have to rush through something that has a major impact on our school district. So if I can just ask that we go through each policy, and if we don't have any comments, we just continue to move forward.
We're on policy GCK for professional staff assignments and transfers?
Are there any questions with regard to policy GCK, professional staff assignments and transfers? Hearing none, we can move on to item 13.3, policy GCOA, evaluation of instructional staff. Are there any questions or comments? Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, I have a question on page three of policy 13.3. And it states, "A teacher who is employed for more than 20% of the school day is incomplete." Does it matter what the absence is for? They will receive an incomplete for their evaluation?
And you're on page three. Is that paragraph one of page three?
On page three, let's see, where? Is it the very top? I need to open it up. Let me go back to it. Dr. Davis, is there a way in the future that when we're going through these policies, that it can show on the screen for people who are here so they can understand and see what we're doing? Because I know they're looking like, I'm not sure what's going on, what you guys are talking about. And now to give them opportunity to read and to see exactly what we're doing so they don't have to take the time to go back home and look at these policies and see what's going on. Or, if you don't want to do that, I will suggest that the person who comes up has to read it, and I know they don't want to do that. So it could be easy if we can just place it up on the screen so everyone can see it. But I'm talking about at the beginning, first, is it the first paragraph?
Where it says, "A teacher who is employed in an induction annual continuing contract who is absent for more than 20% of the days in the district, annual evaluation cycle may, at the recommendation of the superintendent or his or her designee, have his or her debt results reported to the South Carolina Department of Education is incomplete. Teachers with an incomplete are eligible to repeat their contract level during the next year of employment." Typically, what happens is, in order to get a year's credit, you have to have 152 days of work, and I would have to look for Dr. Miley to do the math to see if 20% of the days, the 190 days with, 20% of 190 is what, 38 days? So they would miss 38 days of the school year. So we're not certain if they could adequately be evaluated. And this is what the School Board Association is recommending.
Right, and we don't always have to accept their recommendations. We can take it for information and decide as a board. But I guess my question is, if we decide to do that, does it matter what those absences are for? If it's something that they've been hospitalized, or maybe they were unfortunate and had two or three deaths in the family that caused them to miss work? How do we decide this 20% or what will be waived? I guess that's my question.
We would have to look at it because what we do each year is build the DEP calendar that we have to submit. So if they are outside of the window of time where they have to be evaluated or have the observations, it may be impacted based on the time, the timing of the semester that the person's out.
Then can we go back? I'm sorry, Dr. Davis, go ahead.
I was gonna say, just as a point of clarification in the policy as stated, it says that the district annual evaluation cycle may, at the recommendation of the superintendent or his or her designee, have his or her DEP results reported to the South Carolina Department of Education as incomplete. So it's not must or will, but it does give the flexibility of the superintendent to determine and take those things in consideration before submitting that incomplete.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Next, we have policy GDJ.
Are there questions or comments with regard to support staff assignments and transfers from board members? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me, as a point of clarification, just so everyone knows, I know at least a week before school board meetings, I know we send out notifications, it's on the website, social media and all, and the website. If you go to richland2.org, on the very first page, the homepage, the right side of the page has board meetings, and there's a place there where you can click on all of the agenda items to make sure that you see all of the attachments, so you can even print them and come to the board meeting beforehand if you want while we're talking about, you know, something else to do. But just so you know that you don't have to wait to come here to find out what we're going to talk about, it's always on the, on the richland2.org homepage, always on the front page, and you can see previous board meetings, you can see the, and attachments, so you don't have to wait until you get here, until we, you know, consider something else. But just so you know, that everything that we're talking about here is actually provided for the public, so you won't have any surprises. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, 13.5 report, financial impact of the reform bill. Dr. Harry Miley will share this information with you. Dr. Miley?
Thank you. Good evening. This actually is more of an update on the budget bill passed as far as the reform bill passed, but I thought it would be kind of a piggyback on Mr. Shad's legislative update. The House bill that was passed does include, it's good news for teachers, it includes a step increase and a 4% raise. It talked about 5% at one time, but it ended up being 4% passed by the House. That's excellent news. The unfortunate part is they didn't fund it. They talk about $159 million. That's not adequately funding the teacher pay raise. They also did not fund the 1% increase for retirement. If you look at the legislative notes, I think they put $4 million. It costs us $2 million for one district, and the state's allocating $4 million for that 1% retirement increase. So it's not adequate funding. For, to give you an example, as it exists today, the House bill mandates those raises and the step increase and the employment and retirement increase is about $10.3 million to Richland 2. Right now, the allocation coming out of this House bill increases our funding at this, from the state, around $6.1 million. So the increase mandated is 10, and the increase in funding is 6. Just to make it clear, last year, when we went up to the max cap at this county level, the increase in local funding was about $4 million. So right now, we really aren't able to fund unless something changes in the Senate. We actually don't have adequate funding based on the House bill, and if we went up to the max at this county level, we would barely break even on just the mandates from the state. That's not including any increases to any non-certified people in the district. We have typically, historically in this district, when the teachers get a raise, other classified employees get a raise. That's not- That's not included in here. The other thing I wanted to update you on is our timeline of our budget process. The county has asked us to deliver our budget approved by you in two readings by May the 3rd. We're not gonna make that. I've told the county that that's gonna be difficult. It was gonna be difficult anyway. If you remember last year, the legislature was very slow and late in getting us our information and the state allocation. In addition to that, we have another complicating, we don't expect anything different this year, but in addition, we have another complicating factor. The shutdown at the federal level delayed the Census Department developing the population estimates. So you know our cap for our millage rate cap, based on Act 388, is based on two factors in that formula. It takes the growth rate in population, plus the growth, the increase in the CPI. You add those together, that's our percentage increase in our millage that's allowed by Act 388. Department of Revenue and of Physical Affairs is telling us that that growth factor component might not be available until at least the third week in April. So we literally cannot even calculate the cap in our millage rate cap until they give us that number. So meeting the county's May 3rd deadline of having you approve our, finishing the budget, having you approve that budget in two readings is very difficult by May the 3rd, and we don't think we'll make that. But we just wanted to let you know of those issues floating out there, we hope, and we're hoping to talk to some of the legislative delegation to encourage the Senate. The Senate did come in last year, if you remember, and helped funding for K through 12. We hope that's the same case, the Senate is delivering that this month. So we're hoping that will improve, but we've got a long way to go before we'll be having the resources we need, and I'll be glad to answer any of the questions.
Dr. Miley, I do know, it's me, I do know that with regard to the education reform bill, the Senate is very receptive, and it's a smaller body, you know, to try to move. If you're gonna move a needle, then the fewer moving parts you have, the better. If we could, if you could employ us to do one thing, to share one thing with our legislators, I know there are a lot of moving parts, if you could employ or urge us, the community or whomever, to share one critical point with legislators that we talk to, what would that be?
That would be adequately funding their mandates and/or increase the base student cost to the state law.
Simple as that. Thank you. Questions or comments from other board members? Thank you, Dr. Miley.
Thank you.
Now we're moving on. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have at 3.6 report, capital improvement update. This will be shared by Ms. DeWell Anderson, Ms. Anderson.
Good evening. Here on our monthly report to give you an update on our capital improvement and our bond projects. I'll go through this quickly and answer any questions that you all may have. Work to date that is complete, I mentioned this last time, but the North Springs entrance is complete, so that is the one project that we can say is already complete. Currently in our design phase, we have lots of projects in design phase, all of our secure entrances are currently in their design phase. We've met multiple times for the addition of Blythewood High School. We've had a couple of meetings on design for Forest Lake. CFK North as well is right on schedule for its design. Blythewood Academy, WR Rogers are in the design phase, Support Service Center, we've just had architects out there today confirming some more stuff there. Was in a meeting all day today for E.L. Wright and CFK on a programming meeting for them. We've had multiple discussions about performing arts, our HVAC and mechanical, so we've had we've hired designers to focus on those systems and to have those systems done. Roofing as well, Terricon is working on our roof replacement and also making those modifications to our transportation hub. Other projects that are on right now, that's in either design or actively getting done through our bond projects, buses, we should have 14 buses for us by the summer. They've been ordered, and we will, there's some lead time on those, so hopefully by the start of next year, we'll have new buses. Cameras, we're still evaluating and going through the process of updating our camera system across the district. Bless you. Windows, we are working on a new product to put on our windows that actually has a higher rating to put on our windows in all of our areas, and we are working on that now to make sure that we have a higher rated film on our windows that actually does have more stoppage of bullets on our windows. Fencing, you'll see some fencing done, already been drawn up for some areas and fencing at some of our schools, and then we actually, our IT department, we're meeting with them tomorrow just to continue work on updating our displays throughout our district. Other things I wanted to bring to your attention, kind of a timeline update. In the timeline initially, Richland Northeast and Ridgeview, the renovations to the schools, one thing I didn't mention is the stadiums on here. I forgot that one. We have met multiple times with the stadiums as well, so they are going to be done. I hope I didn't freak anybody out there if I didn't mention the stadiums. So the stadiums are coming, but with the stadiums coming and with the complexities of designing and renovating Richland Northeast and Ridgeview, it's gonna make more sense of us to do those projects simultaneously. It's gonna make the, it'll, the timeline will be better, so we're actually moving up the timeline, and we'll have design meetings with Richland Northeast and Ridgeview starting in April. I wanted to let you know as well, we're trying to finalize a decision on the status of the district office at Brookfield. As been well aware, Forest Lake will be of new Forest Lake, and we're trying to work through the logistics of if we need to relocate the staff that are currently at the district office at Brookfield and find them another home, so that we can provide a new school for Forest Lake Elementary School. We have not come to a final decision on that, but I did want to let you know that that may have a little bit of an impact on the timeline for Forest Lake, but as soon as we come to a final conclusion on that, we will be sure to share that with the school board. And lastly, for a timeline update, OSF, that is the Office of School Facilities, that is the department that is our permitting body, that permits and approves all of the work that we're doing in Richland 2 and across the state for all school facilities. That staff does a great job, but they're understaffed significantly, and unfortunately, we may be encountering, encountering some delays of construction, or we may have to proceed because we cannot get OSF to really do anything. This is not a Richland 2 dilemma. We've talked to our counterparts in Lexington 1 and other districts that they've decided to move forward with some projects, so I wanted to let you all know, let the community know that we are working very hard to get OSF to approve our secure entrances and get all those approved, but right now, we are encountering some challenges with them, but we're gonna continue to work hard to get those done, and Dr. Davis and I have been in discussions to try to formulate a plan to get that approved as quickly as possible. Lastly, I just wanted to remind the public of our website, that has all of our communications for every single project. On our Richland 2 webpage, if you go to bond projects, and you'll go to, you can see pages that look like this, if you go to elementary school tab, you'll see the all elementary projects with a ribbon on where they are in the design or planning phase, and if you click on one of those projects, you'll see some key information about each of those projects. With that, I'll answer any questions that you all may have.
Questions or comments from board members? Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Well, you answered one, and that was about the stadiums at the high school. The other, the other question is, have we looked at metal detectors for maybe the high schools and how much that would cost if we just potted it, starting with the high schools only?
We have not done a formal evaluation of the cost in terms of how much they would cost. We did do some analysis on the cost of the time it would take to have a school such as Spring Valley with 2,000 students, to have a metal detector for every student that comes in. The analysis we've gotten, and the discussion we've gotten from law enforcement, is that it's not the solution, not a, not a operationally efficient solution to protect the kids from a shooter. So right now, we have not made a decision, it's not the district's, the administration's recommendation to put metal detectors. We can, of course, do some more analysis and work with our partners and our local law enforcement agencies and others to evaluate that need again, but at this time, it's not our recommendation to use metal detectors for our schools.
I would love for you to go back and look at that, especially with this bond money that we have. I think parents would feel more safe if they know that's something that we're seeking. And your comment that it can't keep students from a shooter, but it can help students from bringing in weapons, especially a gun into our school.
And I want to clarify my comment. I mean that if a shooter walks up and kids are in line to go through a metal detector, that is not gonna stop someone who hasn't gone through the metal detector of causing harm to our students. So yes, it can help eliminate guns from getting in our buildings, yes, ma'am, but if somebody just walked up on campus and they're in line to go into the metal detector, that's not gonna, the metal detector's not gonna stop a shooter from shooting the kids in line to go through a metal detector.
Right, and I'd love to see us do that. We are always the first to light the pilot, everything, especially when it comes to academics and some of these awards. Let's be the first to pilot that in one of our high schools, and then let's get the data from that, and let's make a sound decision about that.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Agostini, but I think Dr. Davis, I want to make, I got you. Ms. Agostini?
Thank you for bringing that up. I have a question, because that has been suggested to me, the metal detectors, and I'm interested to hear what, for example, Spring Valley, because when I hear it, and people think it's a simple solution, I keep trying to think of the logistics of it. Did they give you an estimate of how, how much time and how many metal detectors we'll need to have to get 2,000 kids in a school?
I don't have those, I can go back and get that, I don't have that off the top of my head. You know, you just take, for example, what it takes to get into a basketball or a football game. I mean, it's, it's a lot of time, and our concern that we've had is, I mentioned, don't get me wrong, we want to have kids safe, we don't want that to happen, and there's a layered security approach that we want to make sure happens, but at the same time, we have to look at where, if they're in line to get in, how do we protect them there as well?
And I just keep thinking, where there's a will, there's a way, that, you know, if people are going to come in, and I can't, I don't know how they're gonna go through the backpacks and the musical instruments and the sports bags, so that's my concern with the metal detector. Thank you.
Mr. Manning?
Thank you. I had some of the same concerns, logistics of all of that. There's multiple doors, students come in and out all day, additional staff demand the metal detectors, and then there's lots of other issues. I mean, I think if this board wants to have an analysis done of metal detectors, I'm fine with that. I am not for a pilot and then an analysis. I'm okay with an analysis, and let us look at that to determine whether we want to do a pilot or not, if that's the will of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Mr. Shad?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Anderson, I also want us to state with regard to metal detectors, just using Spring Valley, because I'm familiar with it. Logistically, if we're talking about having, I would imagine, one metal detector at the entrance to try to get 2,000 students through that one door, those doors in the front, but if you don't do that, and you say, "Well, no, let's put the metal detectors at all entrances," because kids go in through all those entrances, so we're talking about a metal detector per entrance, then you have to have law enforcement to be there at the metal detectors, to man those various locations, and I would imagine it would have to apply to the teachers and the staff as well, to make sure that they are not coming with any, really, metal, not just weapons, but metal, as Ms. Agostini stated. Safety, of course, is a major concern, and I know there was some, there is a concern because of a gun that was found. It appears that it was because we have the see something, say something policy, and it worked. And thankfully, we have not had an incident where any gun was discharged. Without getting to any specifics with regard to things that we must decide on as a board with regard to potentially weapons that are on campus and how we deal with that, it has worked. We're not only just talking about guns, but it has worked. So the metal detectors, yes, that can put some parents at ease, but also want to make sure that there's not a false sense of security as well, that just because we have that, that we should just rest on our laurels with regard to other efforts that I know that you're doing, and I think you've even said, Ms. Anderson, you won't even tell us publicly everything that we are doing, and I appreciate that. So just, we need to, we perhaps need to take a look at it, but we need to also make sure we take everything into consideration, especially given the budget constraints that we're under.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. I'll just say, as in my role as Executive Director of Operations, we have a great team with Chuck Earles and our relationship with the Sheriff's Department. I send my kids to this district and schools every day. It does, I want to make sure they're safe and secure, but we have a very holistic approach with Katina Davis, our mental health staff, that really focuses on a lot of those issues to make sure we're providing a safe and secure environment, not just the physical structure and not just these barriers, but also, we do do things weekly, monthly, to ensure that things are done to do what you said, that I can't reveal all those things, so, but thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Thank you for the comments from my colleagues, and again, I'll go back and say I would still like to have some type of assessment, so we can take a look at the numbers, so we can assure the public that we hear what they're saying, and safety is our number one priority, and then we have numbers where we can actually talk about figures.
Yes, ma'am, I'd be happy to do that for you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Shad?
Dr. Elkins Johnson, that would be for all the five high schools, as well as Blythewood Academy that serves high school students, and I would imagine adult education.
I would like to see that, but I would like for them just to start somewhere, just to give us an idea of the cost. So they don't have to start with all of the schools, but maybe a cost for maybe the high school, the middle school and elementary, just to give us an idea to know what we're working with.
And a point of clarification, Blythewood Academy does have metal detectors, so we currently do have those in place, but that's 50 to 100 kids that come in, and so we do have that in place now, so we can at least get a little bit of some figures at a small scale, but we'll do a complete analysis.
And also, have we researched maybe other states or other school districts that may have this, and then we could go take a visit to see how it works and what's going on? Have we considered that as well?
I'll answer, no, we have not researched. This is the first conversation we've had publicly about metal detectors as a school district, to my recollection, so we did not know this was something that the board was interested in us exploring, so administration's not done a research or evaluation of metal detectors, of cost, manpower, of those things, and so we're just receiving this information for the first time as something that the board would like for us to look into, and so we'll begin the process of looking into the cost effectiveness of metal detectors, as well as the research that's out there about whether or not metal detectors reduce incidents or weapons or things of that nature on school campuses, and provide that in a board brief to the board. Madam Chair?
Mr. Shad?
I apologize. Let me also add this too, for the benefit of the community. When you go into the courthouse, you go through the metal detectors, and if it alerts to anything, then they have a wand, and so they wand you as well. So potentially, you might not necessarily have to use a metal detector at every entrance, but if someone's still there which has the wand, then you could still use that, and I'm sure that's a lot more cost effective than metal detectors as well.
But you have one entrance in and out of the courthouse, just one entrance.
Even if they go through the metal detector. And in addition to that, that is during the entire operational hours of the courthouse, and so that also, the metal detectors, from my experience, limited experience with metal detectors in schools in other parts of the country, that is a requirement for all individuals who enter the premises of those campuses all day. And so that includes parents, that includes grandparents, that includes your readers that are coming in, and so we can give the information, but I think we should look at this holistically, and what the impact of that would be. That would be a seismic shift in the way that we conduct business in Richland School District 2. Just as a reminder, as a point of information, we had a policy that we brought before the board earlier, or I think late last year, regarding visitations into classrooms, that was met with a high level of concern about limiting, when it was stated we were doing it for the purpose of safety and security, that it was met with a high level of scrutiny and concern, and so now we're talking about now having those same individuals as they come in to visit our schools, to also go through metal detectors during the operational hours of our schools. This also includes, operational hours of our schools run to 8, 9, and 10 o'clock at night, depending on what events are taking place on campus. So we will do a very comprehensive study and provide that information to the district so that you can be informed, and then we'll share that information, and we'll be able to have some more formal discussion regarding metal detectors.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions about anything else? That's it?
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. I want to say too, just so you don't think they were trying to rush you through anything or not have information available. Mr. Anderson provided like the long project updates for bond, but if you go to richland2.org, just because I don't know all of the ends of the website thingy, I just do the search engine for what I'm looking for, and I type "bond," but I know if you type www.richland2/bond, everything comes up, the elementary, middle school, high school updates, the forums we've had, our project updates, every single thing that you could possibly think of with regard to bonds, it's all there, so you don't have to be super-specific, just type in richland2/ or is it backslash? Forward, back, whatever, "bonds," and everything that you're looking for will come up under that search engine. Thank you so much. Dr. Davis?
Madam Chair, members of the board, we're at Board Item 13.7, Report Achievement, and our Executive Director of Accountability, or Director of Accountability and Assessment, Dr. John Honor, will provide this information for you. Dr. Honor?
Thank you. Ms. Mackey, Dr. Davis, members of the board, it's my pleasure to come again to present an analysis of student achievement. What's going to be different about this analysis this evening is that rather than looking at the results by grade level or by grade span, middle school versus high school versus elementary, we're going to be looking at the results of our students on the state assessments by ethnicity. Now, before we get started, I want to go through just a little short mental exercise, if you would, please think back to when you were in high school or college, and at some point you may have received a report card. And it may have looked something like this, I don't know what your grades would have been like, mine weren't always that good, but if you look at this example, we can see that this student has got a B, couple As, couple Cs, you convert it to a four-point scale, and it appears that this student has earned a 3.0. But is that actually the case? It's important to weight the factors, because in this instance, what you look at, and what you'll see is that when you include the number of credit hours that each of those courses is worth, you'll notice that that Biology 101 lab is only worth one credit hour, and then when you calculate, you find out that the student actually earned a 3.2. Okay? Reason I mention this is because when I present results on student achievement that is broken out by ethnicity or any other demographic category, sometimes people forget to consider the weighting of those factors involved. In this example, if you were to look at these numbers and simply average them up, it would appear that we have 52.3% of our students scoring at Level 2 or higher. However, just like you had to factor in the weighting of those courses, you have to factor in the percent of the student population behind those numbers. When you weight them according to their percent of the population, you find out that actually the weighted or correct average comes out to 42.4. I point this out because as we go through the presentation, you will see places where there's high numbers, low numbers, and as you're looking at it, you might think, "Why is this all students at the end not look like it fits with the others?" That's why. Okay. Thank you. All right. To begin with, just a quick reminder, we're going to look at the South Carolina Ready Assessments. These assessments are given in grades 3 through 8, and includes English Language Arts and Mathematics. There are four performance levels. This evening, we're going to be looking at the results for the percent of students who scored Level 3 or higher. Again, state accountability addresses both Level 2 or higher and Level 3. Tonight, we're going to refer to Level 3 or higher. As has been my practice, I'm not going to read all the numbers, however, I want to make sure that everyone understands what's being presented. Here, we are looking at just one year's data. We are looking at the 2018 South Carolina Ready Results, in this case for English Language Arts, and again, we are looking at the percent of students scoring meets or exceeds expectations, again, divided out by ethnicity. The column in blue represents the percentage for Richland 2 students, and the column in green is the South Carolina State Average. And again, very quickly going across, you'll see some taller columns, some shorter columns, and then you may be thinking, "Why is that all students where it is?" Again, it's because of the weighting of the number of students involved. Although it's important to consider achievement, and just a snapshot, and to see where we are, it's also important to consider growth. What this chart is presenting to us is the change in the percent of students who scored meets or exceeds expectations, from where we started as a district and as a state in 2016 to how we did last year. And it's kind of a funny-looking chart, because the zero is not at the bottom, and the reason it's not at the bottom is because we have to reflect some negative numbers. As you can see, for example, from 2016 to 2018, the percent of Asian students scoring at the top two levels in Richland 2 decreased by .6. For the state, it increased by .2. Going across, you can then see that among African-American students, our percentage increased 4%, while the state declined .4%. Any questions about how this graph works? Again, as you can see, we saw previously that Richland 2 outperformed the state in each of these ethnicities, but also, for the most part, our growth was also above the states for English Language Arts. Moving on to math, we continue to see the same pattern with Richland 2 students having a higher percentage meeting the exceeds or exceeds expectations. You'll notice that for Hispanic and Latino, we're actually tied with the state. And the growth in math is a slightly better picture, because nobody, the state or Richland 2, had any declines, so in this graph, we see that the numbers are all going in the So, again, the growth for Richland 2, in each of these different ethnicities, with the exception of Hispanic or Latino, exceeds the state average. Moving on to the South Carolina Palmetto Assessment of State Standards, or PAST, we're going to look at science first. Remember that science was administered last year in just grades 4, 6, and 8. There are four performance levels. These are the same four that we saw with SC Ready. Once again, in just about each and every ethnicity, with the exception of Hispanic or Latino, Richland 2 students outperformed the state average. Now, with science, because we had a change in the standards, we're only looking at, instead of 2016 to 2018, we're only looking at 2017 to 2018. It's only one year of growth. And here again, we had a slight decline among Asian students in Richland 2, but for the state, they went up, and you can see how the other numbers compare. For Social Studies, last year, again, this was not administered to all students, which only grades 5 and 7, and because Social Studies has not moved to the new standards, they are still using three performance levels, not met, met, and exemplary, so we'll be looking at Level 2 and 3, 2 or higher. Not to keep repeating myself, but again, Richland 2 students at each of the demographic This next graph, when I first input the numbers and put it from just data into a chart, kind of alarmed me, because the numbers are all dropping. It is not entirely unusual in our state to see, from one year to the next, performance across the state to have a decrease or an increase that looks pretty uniform. And as you can see here, every place that Richland 2 dropped, the state dropped as well, and in most instances, every place where Richland 2 dropped, the state dropped farther. So, although I wouldn't celebrate a decline in the percent of students who scored met or exemplary, I would be happy that we didn't drop as far as the state. Okay. Also, among the state assessments are the high school end-of-course assessments. So, again, we're looking at English Language Arts, excuse me, English 1, Algebra 1, Biology, and U.S. History and Constitution. There are now five performance levels, A through F, and we're going to be looking at Level 3 or higher, so these are students who earned a C or better. Again, to repeat myself, in each of the demographic categories, Richland 2's average of students scoring Level 3 or higher exceeds that of the state. Looking at growth, again, this is with Algebra 1, we had a recent change in the standards, so we're just looking at one year, 2017 to 2018, and again, we're looking at the percent of change, kind of direction of movement, and for the most part, Richland 2 was positive. Black or African-American students dropped by point... Excuse me, 2.2. The state dropped by 1. Two or more races, for some reason, had a fantastic year.
Do we know they have aren't dropped for Hispanic or Latino?
Yes, it's going to be just over 1.0, and I think I probably forgot to change the color-
Oh, okay.
...of the font on that. So, it looks like it's just going to be slightly more than 1.0. I apologize for that.
It does on my slide. I apologize. Yeah. It does. I apologize.
Glad to hear that.
Got it. It's negative 1.3 for-
Thank you.
-folks who can't see this.
Moving to English 1. We see essentially the same pattern in most cases. Richland 2 exceeds. And this is the change in the percent. As a reminder, though, those bars look fairly tall, but keep in mind the scale. For Biology, can Richland 2 students, for the most part, exceed the state average? Another year, where, looking from 2017 to 2018, pretty consistent across the state, there were declines in the percent of students scoring at the top two levels. Again, Richland 2, in some areas, we did decline more, in other areas, we declined Finally, United States History and Constitution. Again, in isolation, with the exception of Hispanic or Latino, all of our different demographic categories outperformed the state. It's once again, when you put them back together as a whole, that we fall slightly below the state average.
Dr. Honor, can I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
So, well, this isn't necessarily a great one, because one of them is under, but there was on Biology 1, everybody in all demographics in Richland 2 exceeded the state, but then all students somehow was less than the state. When you-
Again, it's the weighting.
Oh, it's the weighting. Okay.
You have to remember the number of students. For example, the Asian percentage dropped 14.3.
Yeah.
They're only like 3% of the tested population, so they don't pull the district average down as much when they decline.
Okay. All right. Yeah. That was... Thank you.
And finally, looking at growth, from 2017 to 2018 on U.S. History and Constitution, again, the district is doing well, and it's changed in the percent of students scoring the top two levels for U.S. History and Constitution. And finally, to summarize what we've seen this evening, if you look at the five of our largest ethnicities, now, we don't have a large enough Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander or American Indian or Alaskan native to report their results publicly. FERPA requires that we keep those results masked, because there's a possibility of identifying individual students based on those numbers. So, we look at our top five ethnicities, across eight different assessments, that's four, elementary, middle, you've got your ELA, Math Science, and Social Studies, and then you've got four at the high school. That gives you 40 comparison points, okay? Times two different ways of looking at it, under student achievement, again, looking at performance in a single year. Of those 40 comparison points, Richland 2 equaled or outperformed South Carolina in 37 of those 40 comparison points. It's about 92.5% of the time, our students did better, as well, or better. Student growth, of course, you're looking at change over time, from one point in time to another. In some of these, we're able to look across three years, 2016 to 2018, and others, we had to look from 2017 to 2018, but again, when you total them all up, out of the 40 comparison points, Richland 2 students equaled or outperformed South Carolina on 27 of the 40 comparison points. Now, again, we did see declines, so I am counting where we declined less than the state as doing better than the state, and considered that to be outperforming them. Any questions?
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Dr. Honor, thank you for the presentation. Just a few questions. I noticed in all of the content areas, African-Americans had the lowest scores, and even with percent Level 3 or higher, we struggled in that area. So, I'm not sure if you can answer this question, or Dr. Gregory, but what are we doing, what strategies, what programs or training that we have to enclose the achievement gap? And then the other thing, is there any way that maybe later on, you can do a presentation of these test scores versus regular courses, and then AP courses by ethnic background?
I would be happy to share the information, broken out by demographic, the performance of our students, on any of those measures that you'd be interested in. There are some already published for the state and national assessments, like the SAT and the ACT, but I would be happy to gather those together in a concise presentation and share that with you. As far as what we are doing to address those, Ms. Gregory's going to speak to you about that.
I will start with Mr. Newton, who's our Elementary Director, and we've talked to you earlier about our focus on literacy across all disciplines, but he's going to talk to you for a second about elementary.
Well, as you know, the achievement gap starts very, very early, so one of the things we're doing is we have a focus on literacy across all disciplines, and we have adopted a new curriculum for child development that mirrors our kindergarten, first grade as well. We are also expanding what we call Kinder College and Scholars Academy for our students who are still having trouble reading throughout the summer, from like five schools to 14 schools. Additionally, we have implemented Lucy-Calkins units of writing, which is evidence-based and very effective, in all of our schools, K through 5. We have ongoing professional development for our teachers and as well as for our school administrators, and of course, it's going to take commitment and consistency for this to change, but looking at the numbers that was displayed tonight, I think we're making great gains with our African-American students.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. So, again, early identification and intervention at the elementary level. We had talked to you earlier about common district expectations. We've been working the last couple of years on common district expectations and pacing guides, our walkthrough and other things, with 345 teachers new to the district. You heard Mr. Newton talk about consistency is important. Also, the implementation of a district formative assessment system, where we're focusing on teaching and assessing to the intent of standards, using data to inform instruction, and that way, we're looking at students individually. Right now, we have 18 schools, nine elementary, seven middle schools, all middle schools, and two high schools. This includes benchmarking three times per year, with intensive data reviews and professional learning, an item bank where teachers can create common assessments or their own assessments, where they actually pick out the indicator of learning, they pick out the DOK level and the type of questioning. And in addition, there's coaching and ongoing support, which is face-to-face and online. Benchmark schools last year, in our initial data, have slightly higher numbers of students who have increased, and lower numbers of students who have decreased in our state test. And the third prong in this is AVID, and I'm going to ask Ms. Mary Paige Boyce, who is our College and Career Initiatives Director, to tell you what we're doing with AVID. We're real excited about this.
Good evening. Thank you for asking.
Thank you for asking. AVID is expanding district-wide over the next two- to three-year timeline. We want to align ourselves with AVID's goal. AVID's mission is to close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in a global society. The AVID framework centers on four domains, which are leadership, the system, the culture, and instruction. And it also focuses on using those four domains to close the opportunity gap, the expectation gap, and again, the achievement gap. Through AVID, we will incorporate culturally relevant teaching practices, integrate powerful instructional strategies, and academic behaviors around what we call WICER, which is Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading.
One question. How many of our schools have we incorporated AVID? Because I know it's not in all of the schools, so how many of the elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools that we have AVID?
We are currently in all high schools, all middle schools, and half of the elementary schools. We are bringing on seven new elementary schools next year, and then over the next two to three years, we will get the rest of the five or so that will be left. And as we go district-wide, we are also reviewing our practices in every school to make sure every school is operating with AVID with fidelity.
So what's keeping us from incorporating AVID in all of the elementary schools?
All of the elementary schools are prepared to come on, it's just we have to time it because of the training and all of that. It's just difficult to do everyone at the same time.
And just to re, just to emphasize as well, Dr. Elkes Johnson, that's a great question. What prevented it was that it was a site-based decision in the past on whether or not you would be in AVID school. That's no longer a site-based decision, it's a district-level decision that we will be an AVID, a district-wide AVID school system, so that we can work to close the achievement gap. And where professional development is consistent and spread out throughout the district, from elementary, middle to high, as our students matriculate from one, from elementary to middle and to high school. So that's the key component.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought it was, but thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Holmes and then Dr. Caution Parker.
I am so glad to hear that, because that's always been a pet peeve of mine, this site-based management. I mean, you have schools going in 41 different directions, doing 41 different things, and nobody's getting anywhere, the district as a whole. But anyway, that's enough of my preaching tonight. But I do want to ask one question. Are we still using open court? Is it kindergarten first and second, and are we doing that district-wide?
I was going to say, yes, kindergarten, first grade this year, hopefully, then second grade.
If you turn your mic?
Sorry about that. It's kindergarten and first grade. And also, we have Worlds of Wonder, which mirrors open court for pre-K kids as well, so that they are aligned, and when they matriculate through, they get the same type of instruction. But we look to also add that to second grade for this upcoming school year.
Okay.
And we've had ongoing training for our teachers throughout the year, not just the summer, but coaches coming in, coaching teachers individually, and providing demonstration lessons.
I just remember, and this is a long time ago, over 20 years, when I was principal at Forest Lake Elementary, and we implemented open court, and I just saw tremendous gains. And then I think Pontiac was doing it first, and then Lonnie B. Nelson came on board, and it seemed like we had this good movement of implementing that program and seeing great results. And then again, site-based management, you know, so we all go 41 different directions.
Okay, I'm going to jump in here before I get cut off again.
Dr. Holmes.
It's okay. Mr. Newton, I did have a question. I was curious, because we talked about it last week, when we talked about, well, the last board meeting, when we talked about cultural competency. And as you know, the achievement gap does initially start with that elementary level. I want to make sure that we are implementing, are we, what's the process for implementing the cultural competency piece? Not just the socialization part, but the academic part that we discussed last week. What is the plan for that?
Well...
Will be part of AVID.
Yeah, AVID has that strand that when we start implementing, but...
I'm familiar with AVID. AVID has a piece of the cultural competency, but I'm more concerned about the actual teacher training portion of how the teachers address the students. I know, I'm familiar with AVID. AVID is good, and I don't have anything against AVID, but I'm talking specifically about the initiative that we talked about implementing with the cultural competency, of the teachers knowing how to address specific needs of the culture.
I'm going to have to defer that question to...
Okay.
We will be working with Dr. Grant with the initiatives that we have in place, and also with Ms. Williams, but it does begin in those early grades, and it is critical, as you said, and that's what we also said about literacy, because you're right, that is where it all starts.
Okay.
And so, it will be part and is part of what we're doing in the training that we have now.
So they're going to be going with Dr. Bute also with some of that information? Is, are they part of that? Dr. Grant?
Dr. Grant, you want to...
The decision hasn't been made yet as to whether or not it would be through the same coursework that Dr. Bute is doing. We're trying to look at how to develop common language for everyone, how to implement training for a district of our size, for the number of teachers that we have. We're trying to let Dr. Bute's cohort get to the point where they are ready to use the information that they have learned over the course of these several months that they've been working, to give a recommendation for how they see a rollout district-wide, what they think that that would look like. But we're not at a point yet of making that decision of whether or not it would be through her, through some other group. We know that AVID does have some of the culturally relevant strategies there, and so that's something that immediately, as soon as we start working with AVID district-wide, we'll be able to have that in, and then we'll have to decide how we can supplement that to get all of our teachers trained.
I would thank you, Dr. Gregory. I do, I'm sorry.
I do want to stress that I know that that is a key piece to move academic achievement. And I think the sooner-than-later attitude of implementing into the elementary school, where we know the achievement gap is huge, we must take a good look at that, in my opinion, immediately. Thank you.
Dr. Holmes, just also, in addition to that statement that Dr. Grant made, I was trying to jump in. One of the things that we will be mindful of as we're starting to roll out AVID as a district-wide focus or a district-wide framework, it is a framework for us to help us to close the achievement gap. That AVID component, we have the flexibility, as we're doing that AVID component, to add in additional types of training for culturally relevant pedagogy during that time. So when we're addressing culturally relevant pedagogy, we don't have to follow necessarily the prescribed AVID approach only. We can add additional training for our staff while we're doing that. This will allow us to be more expeditious in our ability to roll out the culturally relevant pedagogy pieces in a mass way, as opposed to 40 teachers at a time. It's critical that we get to as many teachers as possible, and so using AVID as the framework or the vehicle to do that, or allow us to do that, so we can modify the culturally relevant pedagogy side piece when we get to that in the training. And in addition to that, we also are looking at opportunities of how we can expand some of these programs, particularly the literacy approaches, to the community. Because although the achievement gap starts, I would say that I will make a kind of rebuttal that I think the achievement gap starts at home. It doesn't necessarily start when the students, students come to us with deficiencies, they come to us with less words, they come to us not being able to recognize their names, not being able to recognize shapes and colors. And so, our teachers are doing at that level of a yeoman's job of trying to close that gap initially. These things that we have in place with this district-wide approach to going to open court, to using Lucy Callkins, to doing workshop models, to having a systematic approach when it comes to RTI, all those things are important so that when, because many of our students, as they transition from one school to the next, some of our students spend third grade in one elementary school, fourth grade in another elementary school, and fifth grade in a third elementary school. And if we got three different things going on at three different elementary schools, it's almost like starting over. And so, this allows us to be able to have a systemic, a system-wide focus to address these concerns. I will state that I know this is for many of us, the very first time we've seen this data presented in such a way. But I think it's important that we hold a mirror up to where we need to go if we are going to be serious about closing this achievement gap that our students exist. And though I applaud the efforts that we've made thus far in outpacing the state, that's the minimum expectation, to borrow from my illustrious state. The minimum is that we should be above the state average. We need to continue to push beyond that and to the level of expectations that we have always had for our students in Richland School District two. And I will prep you by saying, it will be a source of discomfort for some as we transition into this approach. So just be mindful of that, that that is sometimes, growth is uncomfortable, but we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes.
I want to say, thank you, thank you so much for clarifying that. I appreciate that, because that is what parents really need to know. That's, that's, thank you very much.
Dr. Holmes? Thank you. Mr. Manning?
So, we talked about rolling out AVID, we talked about rolling out cultural competency, we talked about rolling out RTI, we talked, I mean, you know, I just, I guess when it comes to priority and how we do that, capacity of our teachers to absorb and then actually do this work, I have a concern that it just seems like a lot, and I think it's all very important, so I don't know how we layer it in a way that it's actually achievable without overloading our staff, who are also trying to get the curriculum and the behavioral components, and, I mean, the list just keeps growing. I'm a little bit concerned about how we do that.
Consistency and commitment are the key, and we're really actually narrowing our focus more than we are anything else. We are targeted with our interventions and our strategies, and I really think that's making a difference. And even as we mentioned the benchmarks, you know, we've rolled that out in phases, and we have been working several years and involve teachers on the expectations, the pacing guides, the walkthrough tool that we have and things along those lines. And AVID should not, to most of our schools, be anything new, because Sharon Budden brought it to Ridgeview many, many years ago, and when I was the principal of Blithe Wood Middle School, we brought it to Blithe Wood, it was the first middle school in the state. I remember Jim Price, that was on our school board from a presentation, asked that we bring it to all middle schools. And so, that has been a good while, where we have been rolling it out, but not with fidelity. And I think what y'all have talked about is, we're building a system, it's not site-based anymore, but consistency with, you know, new teachers coming in, it's really about making their jobs easier. And Dr. Davis talks about that all the time, when we talk about the formative assessment system with benchmarking and the item bank, you know, ultimately, it is to make teachers' jobs easier.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. And again, not saying we can't do it, I was just wanting to make sure that we had an approach that...
Just trying to be more focused.
Yeah, so thank you very much.
Right. Pardon? Narrow a day on that, right?
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Additional questions or...
Thank you very much.
Mr. Schapp?
Madam Chair, thank you for the presentation. I'm not happy. The achievement gap, I know this is a snapshot. And I know the efforts that we are making, I applaud them. If you do not feel a sense of urgency, and I'm not just speaking to you all, because I know you all feel it, Ms. Gregory.
We do.
It is all hands on deck. We know we're not getting the money, Dr. Miley. I've asked this question in the past with Dr. Arnold standing up here. What would it look like if we had a reading coach, math interventionist at every school? We don't have that. What would it be like if parents, if they're able, or just members of the community, Dr. Davis, coming in and reading to these kindergarteners every single day? We get complaints, but we don't get any action other than that. And I need the community to understand this. If you neglect our children now, they will be incapable of taking care of you later. We are raising citizens now, and we can dump on the school districts as much as we want, but if you are not doing more in the schools and investing more in the schools, sadly, these are the results that you're going to get. I do not want to blame our parents. Some of them may not have the time to read to their child and have them writing their name when they're three, four. We take the kids as they are, but it's our job to try to assist them, our teachers to try to assist them as much as we can. But we need the support of the community to help lift it and to close the, this achievement gap. I share Dr. Davis's sentiment. Okay, we are higher than the state, but we're talking about being a premier school district. We're not even competing with other school districts in this state. We're talking about globally at this point. And I hate to say it, I know I'm a member of the bar, but, you know, we had a Supreme Court that at one time said that the interpretation of the Constitution is that for education, public school education, is that we have a minimally adequate education. I hate that term. Former Chief Justice Finney said that he regret, that was the biggest regret that he had in his term, is coming up with that. And unfortunately, that, to me, it seems like that's a goal. Businesses have told us that the 21st century student, we need more of that. And we know what the demographics are, Dr. Arnold, in terms of 60% of our students are African-American. I did want to ask, I need you to come back up, please, sir. I did want to ask this, and I'm just curious. How do, how does the state or our district determine whether someone's black or African-American have two or more races, or white, or Hispanic?
That is determined when the parent enrolls a child and through the enrollment process, selects gender, the ethnicity, all of that is done at enrollment. We don't make a decision about that.
Okay. So the parent, I don't want to say self-report, the parent reports that their child may have two or more races, or they may decide that their child is black or African-American, or that their child is just white.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And as I understand it, those parents who chose to say that their child was two or more races, that's 5% of our school population?
Yes, sir. Approximately.
Approximately. Okay. All right. And, let's see. Bear with me. It was one where you only had the, where is that? No, it's towards the top. I think it was in English Language Arts. Okay, I usually, all right, the question that I normally ask, what's the difference between growth and proficiency? Thank you.
Proficiency is determined based on one year's performance on an assessment. A bar is set, and whether you meet that or not determines whether or not you are proficient on that assessment. In South Carolina, again, we have four performance levels. It gets a little confusing. We know not met, does not meet expectations is very clear. Meets expectations is very clear. Exceeds expectations is pretty clear, but we also have that fuzzy one with approaches. What I presented tonight is those who are in the top...
Three and four.
Three and four. These are students who meet expectations or exceeds expectations. And again, for social studies, it's met or exemplary.
Right, just those three. All right. And so, thank you, and that reminds me, so the approaches expectations, for the fact of doing this, this presentation, you just chose not to include the number two, approaches expectation. They're getting there.
Yes, sir.
Any idea what that number is of those who are getting close to meeting expectations? So perhaps they have shown growth, but just hadn't gotten to three yet?
I have not looked at those numbers in isolation. I do know that we have a fairly normal distribution, meaning that we've got more students in the two, I'll call them the middle categories, than in the two, you know, the very bottom and the very top. But as far as actual numbers, I couldn't say. But to your point, again, the South Carolina Department of Education, working with the Education Oversight Committee and the community, developed our new state assessment, excuse me, state accountability plan, the South Carolina Succeeds Plan, signed on by the governor, forwarded to the Department of Education, and approved. And it includes some goals for the state of South Carolina. The primary overarching goal is that by 2035, 90% of students will graduate college, career, and citizenship-ready. When you apply... When you apply that down to elementary and middle school, they don't graduate students, but they do have performance on these state assessments. And so there are actually two goals. The first one is that by 2035, 90% of students will score Level Two or higher. That's approaches. But there's also, in conjunction with that goal, another one that says by 2035, 70% of students will score at the higher Level Three. I've presented it both ways, not in an order to, in an effort to confuse anyone, but to be completely transparent, yes, there is, there is reason for presenting in both ways. Tonight, we chose to go with what is probably most clear in most parents' mind, and that's the meets or exceeds.
Thank you. And, and just two more things. I guess really just comments. Unfortunately, I believe just, no one wants to hear this phrase, but I think it is a very real thing from what I've observed in that social promotion. Ms. Gregory, you mentioned something about fidelity. What I have seen is that, like you said, we take the kids as they are when they come in. We try to get them up to level. But what I am seeing is that there are students, and I don't even want to necessarily call it grade inflation, but students that seem to do well in elementary school, and I know there's challenges when you transition to middle school, but the middle school teachers are saying that these teacher, that these students are not ready. And so now they're having to play catch-up, and they may not be able to do that in the three years of middle school. And then the high school teachers, as these students arrive, are not ready. That's a big concern for me. It may be something that is just statewide, nationwide, but my fear is that we are sending these students through these 12 to 13 years, and they are not prepared, and that may bear itself out in terms of the testing. Grades are one thing. They may look great, but then when the rubber meets the road with the testing, that bears itself out that they're not achieving and showing, well, they're not achieving. The second, the last thing, which is, I may end up contradicting myself, is that I also don't want us to necessarily go by data so much that we don't realize, and we are pulling teachers from it because we're telling teachers to really teach to the test, and that really kind of, well...
Dr. Davis?
I would just say, I would just say that, from what I've heard, that there are some teachers who have a concern that they're really not, that teaching and learning is not really going on. And it's, and, and learning is not always measured by a test.
Well, let me just respond to that, and I'll be as brief as I can, because I know the hour is getting late. One, we, we, we should not determine necessarily student readiness based on one standardized test at the end of the school year.
Right.
And so it's important for students to have grades in classes, and there are many students who, by giving standardized tests, may not show necessarily proficiency or meet or exceed standards, but the student does demonstrate the work ethic that it takes in order to take a test. So in some situations, in some classes, a student may be able to take his or her math test two to three times. Some have different philosophies about whether or not that should exist, but if the focus is on mastery and comprehension and proficiency, and demonstration of proficiency, then I think you should give a student an opportunity to take a test multiple times. As I shared with my high school, when I was the principal of the high school, when I introduced that whole concept, I asked a very specific, a very clear question. Give me one test outside of K through 12 in college that you can only, that you only can take one time in life. Give me one. If you can come up with one test, then we can, then we'll go to a one-test model. No one could come up with a test and no one is, and no one has come up with a test yet. You could take the bar multiple times, you could take the MCAT multiple times, the ACT, the SAT, your driver's test, your test to be a realtor, whatever test that exists in life, you could take it multiple times, except for in public education, you just get one shot at demonstrating your ability to be able to do something. So we actually ask our students at third and fourth grade to demonstrate something that people with PhDs don't even, can't even demonstrate, an ability to be able to pass a test at a one, at one time. As far as it comes to taking a, preparing students by teaching them to the test, the best practices suggest that before you teach anything, you should develop the test first. The test backwards design, you are supposed to develop the test first based on the intent of the indicators that exist. So when we did an audit of, we did an audit of tests in the schools, we asked the question. Question one measures, measures what indicator of learning that you were supposed to teach during this unit? If it doesn't adequately, adequately measure that indicator of learning, then it is not a quality question or a good test. What typically happens is we teach, and then we test what we taught. And so that's why you see the grade inflation, the differences in grade inflation versus the standardized test at the end of the year, because the standardized test is clearly divided and is told, you're told, these are the types of things that the student should be able to know or demonstrate at the end of third grade in, in social studies, or the end of third grade in ELA. What we typically do in schools, and this is not to necessarily blame, I'm not blaming our teachers, I'm telling you what the common practices is, the common practices are, because I've observed them personally. You teach, and then you write the test. And the test is written based on what you taught. And if you've ever written a test, I can tell you as an educator, unless you've been trained to write tests, writing a very good test that's both, the question is both valid and reliable, is difficult work. People get paid great money to be able to do those things. Sometimes we ask a novice teacher who is fresh out of school, 23-years-old, to do that, to, to be able to do that. And so it was important for us to come up with a systematic or way to be able to do that, to take that stress and frustration off a teacher. So at the end of the nine weeks with the pacing guides, or the end of that unit with the pacing guide, you should be able to say, these are the things that the student should be able to demonstrate, and these are the questions that I can select, that I know will measure the indicators of learning for this particular subject area. That's where we're going, and we're even having discussions about moving in the directions of being competency-based learning in our school district. And so that every student walking into Algebra One knows, these are the nine things that I need to demonstrate in order to be proficient in Algebra One. And so we're, but we're, we haven't been there. And so as Mr. Manning was saying, initiative fatigue is real, and teacher turnover is high, so you have to be very systematic and very careful in how you are rolling out things. But since we are in the open forum having a discussion, I wanted to answer the questions as they're being presented. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Shad?
Mr. Shad? Have you, are you, is it up? Are you good? And there it is. Questions or comments from board members?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
I would like for us to go move on to rural recruitment initiative, and let's table that to the next meeting due to the late hour. So I'd like to make a motion that we table rural recruitment initiative to the next board meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate that. Thank you so much. And there is a motion on the floor with regard to, it's to moving, to postpone. I don't think you want to table.
I'm sorry.
Table is permanent.
Yes, I want to postpone.
Until?
Until the next meeting.
Second. It's been moved and properly, and thank you, you read my mind there. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can we call for the question, Mrs. Sherman? Do you want hand vote? Hand vote it is.
Oh, yes. It's...
Can I vote, too?
The motion is unanimous, and we will postpone the rural recruitment initiative until the next board meeting. And that's only, not that it's not important, but we're trying to be more respectful of people's time. We know that this is our board meeting, but the people who take the time to come here and participate, and especially educators who stay starts very early, and so you've been up early and here late at night, and one of the things that we're trying to do, some questions we ask openly because they come up, they pop into your head, but we're trying to also ask, get information beforehand so that we're not asking every question that we have here and taking an undue amount of, of time. But we appreciate your patience. At that, we're moving on to item 14, agenda items for next meeting, specifically item 14.1. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, you've seen the information as presented for the proposed agenda for April 9th. We have executive session items that we will address, which will be our student appeals, adult ed requests, our legal matters regarding an ongoing, ongoing and pending litigations, receipt of legal advice regarding a student matter. We have a legislative update. The school focus will be linked for elementary. Special recognitions. We'll also have approval of policy revisions, GBEB, GCK, and GCOA, and GDJ, and we'll have additional policies for your review, GBB, GBA, GBC, and GA. In addition, we'll bring back the report for the rural initiative that was just postponed to the next board meeting, also the approval of the meal rates and approval of the 2019-2020 board meeting schedule.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Are there any questions with regard to item 14, but one, if not, we'll go on to item 15.1, approval of the agenda items for April 9th, 2019, and then we can have discussion in Mississippi.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad?
I move that we approve the agenda items for April 9th, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Shad.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion with regard to those agenda items? Hearing none. Do you want to cast a hand vote, Mrs. Sherman? Okay. The vote is unanimously in the affirmative. So the motion carries. Moving on to item 16, public participation, the second opportunity for the same. We don't need to address that because everyone who signed up to speak in the first opportunity for public participation did... We had nine people signed up, but we only got eight forms. Did you not want to?
No. I'm fine. Go ahead.
You had, so you signed up, but you didn't get a form?
When I got to there, they were...
Okay. What we're doing is, is according to policy, we ask people, yeah, we ask folks to sign up before the board meeting starts. So at 6:30, we pull the list and start speaking. Is it something that can wait until next time, or did you need to? Go ahead. I'm, I'm, do you have a, do you have a form? Go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. But just for the future, you're fine, you're fine, but for future reference, we, we pull the forms at 6:30 so we can start the meeting on time, although we were like two minutes late today, and then we have people speak then. But if you just give us your name...
Okay. My name is Cecile Johnson, and I've been before the board before and written you many letters. And tonight, I'm very pleased with what I've seen with the data, how the data has been reported, and the accountability that we can now have based on race. So I want to thank the superintendent and his staff for that part of what you've done. And this is a very good step in the right direction. And as Mr. Shad say, you know, it's not, it's not enough, but at least now we can begin to track what we need to. And, and, you know, the collective message you've given out tonight, we do have to get the community involved. As he said, yeah, it starts before they get there. That means we need head start money, and we need to address those six million words children need to know before coming in. So I've heard a number of things addressed here tonight, which I, it warms my heart. So I want to thank you. Thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for, for speaking and for adhering to the three-minute rule. In the future, though, if anyone has signed up but didn't get a form, or for any reason you think you're, you know, address, going to address the board, but you don't, let me know earlier so I could have, I could have worked you in, in the first session. But you're fine, no harm done. But if anyone ever feels like they've been overlooked, or you have, just let me know so we can rectify that ASAP. But thank you for your comments. We have arrived at item 17, board and superintendent comments. Mr. Shad?
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Pretty much. Mrs. Agostini?
I wanted to once again thank all the people who came to speak in our public participation and letting your voices be heard. And a special shout-out to Abby Dawson, who spoke in public participation today. She was a classmate of my daughter Caroline's at Center for Achievement, and she was a cross-country teammate of my daughter Tori's at Spring Valley High School. And if you want to see something truly amazing, go watch that girl run a 5K. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Just good night to everyone, and thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Dr. Caution Parker?
Thank you for a very informative evening, and I'll see you two weeks from now.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Mr. Manning?
Ditto.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Dr. Holmes?
Good night.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Dr. Davis?
I don't get that luxury, unfortunately. I have a response. I know, I don't get that luxury. I, I do want to say thank you to our partners who spoke tonight and shared suggestions on how we can improve as a district. I think it's really important that when you have an opportunity to address the board in the school district, to come up with suggestions on how we can improve, because it is important for us to receive that type of feedback. So I do want to say thank you all for that. Congratulations to our 2019-2020 Honor Roll Teachers of the Year. That's Jennifer Bull from Longleaf, A.J. Chambers, Richland Northeast High School, Agnes Knox, Ridgeview High School, Clara Nance, Polo Row Elementary, and Missy Pascal from Round Top Elementary. The 2019 Richland Two District of the Year will be selected soon from this group. Our Human Resource Department invites job seekers to several upcoming all-position career fairs, April 4th, May 1st, and June 17th, here at R2R2 in the Conference Center. You can find more information on our website at richland2.org. And we are celebrating Richland Two serves. Nearly 1,000 students have been participating in community service with various agencies and in their own schools since December. While the numbers are still being tallied, we know students will, were challenged to work 5,000 community service hours and have exceeded their goal. A big celebration is taking place later this week. And as a reminder, for those of you who don't know, I'm sure you do, for our teachers, spring break is just around the corner. It's April 15th through the 19th. And I'll just leave you with this, that something was placed on my heart today. Let us not grow, let us not become weary in doing good, for at the, at the proper time, we will reap the harvest if we do not give up. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. I wanted to just thank you all, as all for being here. I think I did that earlier. But Michelle James's inspirational moment, just choose love rather than hate, was kind of poignant for me and powerful, and I hope it resonated with everyone else as well. I just have to say that being able to witness Ridgeview State Championship, you know, twice, two years in a row, as I sat there with bated breath last year and kind of expected it. This year, front and center was a nice to see. And just a little shout-out to Spring Valley, because they came so close, the Lady Vikings, they came so close. And there are so many accolades, I can't even get them all here. In an, in an effort to, to challenge misinformation when it's given, I do want to offer, welcome anyone to pull up Policy B-E-D-B. With regard to public participation, there is no manipulation. No one has done anything to manipulate the order of service, so please feel free to read that policy in its entirety. If you go to richland2.org, there is a section, there's a little search engine, because I don't know all the, the, the areas by heart, I just go to the search engine, and you can Google our policy, and that one in particular, no one's done anything erroneously or illegal or anything of that nature. So just want to make that known in, in an effort to try to challenge misinformation as it, as it comes to us. Our second meetings are a little bit lengthier with the way that we've set the agenda up, and so we're trying to get questions, you know, answered beforehand to kind of be respectful of your time. And tonight was a good motion to, you know, to, to table, to move something forward that was going to have you here all night long. But that's the reason that our second, the second meeting of the month, it's a little bit length, is a little bit weightier, it's a little meatier compared to the first one. Congratulations to Pasquale Bates, who was announced, I want to say today or last night, as one of the state's 20-under, 20-under-40 recipients of the state, and she's in a, she's an employee at Westwood. So congratulations to that. And there are just too many accolades to get here tonight. Bless y'all for your time, you're so patient, you look like, you know, you look like you're still engaged, and just bless you for being here. We don't take your time for granted, but we appreciate your being here. God bless you all. Can we get a motion to?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad?
I move that we adjourn the March 26, 2019 regular board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. All those in favor? There's no discussion? It is unanimous. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.